...forum here presented by the Richmond Chamber of Commerce. The candidates for Richmond City Commissioner. There will be four commissioners chosen from among the eight finalists in the November election coming up, and they will then govern the city along with the city mayor and the city manager. So interesting times are ahead certainly, and it'll be an interesting learning experience for those who are elected coming up. It's been mentioned that we have one of our candidates absent, and so we do have a statement from Ed McDaniel.
Thank you, Bill. It is with great regret that I am unable to attend the forum this evening. As many of you know, I am an insurance adjuster, and due to Hurricane Florence striking the Carolinas, I have been deployed there to assist families in getting shelter and compensated for their losses. I would like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for allowing me the opportunity to write this message and for communicating it to you tonight. Mandy Goble has done an excellent job at the Chamber of Commerce and is as passionate about the city of Richmond as I am. I would like to take just a moment to tell you who I am and why I would like to be one of your next city commissioners. I am a business owner and a U.S. Army veteran. I am married to Tara McDaniel, who has supported me throughout this entire campaign. She is a Spanish teacher at Madison Central, and together we have Fod Dotters, who are students at Kit Carson, Madison Central, and EKU. For the past 15 years, I have been active in our community through local clubs and organizations. During this time, I have seen why I love Richmond, our community, and our traditions that we have. Richmond has progressed and grown over the last few years. The past commissioners have done a great job, and I appreciate their efforts in making tough decisions to benefit our city. Of course, there are some issues that need to be addressed and changes made, as there are with any city. I know if I elected, I know if elected, I would be a dedicated and faithful servant for the entire community of Richmond. I would be a commissioner that would listen and put in the work for the best interests of our citizens and businesses of Richmond. This is why I am asking for your vote on November 6th for Richmond City Commissioner. I again would like to apologize to the Chamber of Commerce, my constituents, and my fellow candidates for my absence here this evening. Thank you for your time, Ed McDaniel.
And thank you very much. Ed, at this point, we will introduce the candidates here tonight. They will have an opportunity to give a one-minute opening statement. We will ask questions of those that have come from the audience here tonight. They'll have a minute to answer each of those. With this many people, you know, if there's something that somebody wants to add briefly, we'll let you respond to one of the questions that comes up, so that it's not a situation where somebody has something to say about a question and they can't. At the end, we will also have a minute for everybody to maybe sum up some of the questions they didn't get to answer during that time period. So the candidates are Mike Brewer, Michael Bryant, Chris Childers, Jacob Grant, David Johnson, Tyler Johnson, Jason Morgan, and we just heard a statement from Ed McDaniel. Let's begin our opening statements with the candidate Brewer.
Well, it's Michael Bryant's turn. I used to sit next to Robert Blatt when we were on the Chamber together, or I'm sorry, on the Commission together, and he was a better speaker than me, and then I'd be going, uh, uh. But anyway, so Michael's next to me, and you won't have a problem. I've been a lifelong resident of Madison County, everybody knows. Most of the people in this room I know. I mean, it's kind of hard sitting here going, you know, what Mike Brewer is all about. I've served on the Commission for 12 years, been a paramedic here in Madison County for 24 years plus. I am retired off the buggy, but still keep my license up. I worked for the Department of Criminal Justice here on EKU campus since 2004 as a guest instructor. It's in my town. I grew up here. I grew up with a lot of people that are in this audience here. We all share the same streets and same vision for Richmond.
Candidate Bryant, your opening statement.
My name is Michael Bryant. I've been living in Richmond for 32 years. Richmond's my home now. My background, I worked as a reporter for probably 25 years here in Richmond. Last 21 years, I worked for the Emergency Management Agency Chemical Stockpile Emergency Preparedness Program, which is a mouthful, so we'll just call it CSEP from now on. I think it's important to bring experience to this position, and I feel I've got a lot of experience during the time as a reporter. During the past 21 years, I've worked with all local governments, all first responders in Richmond and Madison County. Not only that, I deal with the state, I deal with the feds, and everybody in between. So I think I've got the experience to bring to the city commission meeting and just ask for your vote in November.
Thank you. Candidate Childers.
Yes, my name is Chris Childers, lifelong resident of Madison County myself. Attended high school here, college here, decided to start a family here, a business here for the last almost 20 years. I've served on the city's Planning and Zoning Commission for almost four years now. I just love Richmond. I want to continue to serve Richmond, and I'd love to be one of your next commissioners.
Thank you. Candidate Grant.
Well, first off, I'd like to thank the Chamber for hosting this event, and also Eastern for giving us the venue for this evening. A little information about myself, my name is Jacob Grant. I've been a Richmond resident my entire life. I graduated from Madison Central, and I attended EKU, and then later received a business degree from the University of the Cumberland's, and I currently sell real estate in town. And the reason I'm running for city commission seat is simple. I want to make a difference in the community that I live in, and I want to make a difference. Both of my parents have served this community for their entire life, my father, a local pastor at a church for 27 years, and my mother, a retired special ed schoolteacher. I do business in Richmond. In Richmond is where my wife and I will start our family and raise our kids. I decided it was time for me to step up to the plate and make a difference in the community that I know and love. I want the city to be the best it can for its future generations, and I think that with some servant leadership, with a forethinking approach, and a focus on growth, that we can really give a better quality of life to its citizens.
Thank you. Candidate Johnson.
Good evening. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, the Chamber of Commerce for putting the event together, as well as EKU for the facility. My name is David Johnson. I am a lifelong resident of Madison County. I graduated from here at EKU, class of 2005, so it's been a little bit of time ago. Former intern for the city of Berea in the city administrator's office, a part of the cooperative program that was discussed earlier by the mayoral candidates. I do currently work for the Honda dealership in town, while I have built many relationships with factories such as Kokoku Rubber and Sausage Forge Bluegrass. I know I messed it up just a little bit, but you know, I do have some relationships here in town that I think as city commissioner would be very beneficial to us with the industrial part. For the past 18 years, I've had the honor and privilege of working with Democrats and Republicans. I've named two highways here in Madison County, one Battlefield Memorial Highway, which is part of the tourism, as well as the Sheriff Jerry Combs Highway down in Berea as well.
Thank you, David Johnson. Candidate Tyler Johnson.
My name is Tyler Johnson. I'm an EKU graduate with a master's of public administration with an emphasis in community development. I'm currently a project manager at Fahy, which is a nonprofit in Berea, and I previously worked for the city manager of Frankford. I also spent the 2012 General Assembly working at the state Capitol for the state legislature, and I'm a certified community development block grant administrator through the Department of Local Government. My wife and I own Adorebells, a downtown business in Richmond, and I believe all of those different experiences would make me an effective city commissioner. I've watched as Richmond's passed up numerous opportunities for growth, and I'm running to change that. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. It's a pleasure to be here. Also, I'd like to express my appreciation to the Chamber, to the other commission candidates, and to the audience for your participation. Two years ago, I participated in the Chamber Forum, and I pledge to be your champion at City Hall, so that we could work together to change policy and culture in city government and begin investing in our community. Tonight, I am pleased to report that we have succeeded. Together, we changed policy for the better. Working together, we established policies that helped us retain our police officers and went after high crime areas. We invested in our parks, our sidewalks, laid out plans for new streets, and built better relationships with our community partners. We championed for investments in our quality of life and moved towards improving the business climate in our city. Tonight, I'm asking for your support again. I want to continue to be in your voice at City Hall. I want to leverage my experience to ensure that you have a seat at the table.
Thank you. Our directed questions now, and we'll begin, we'll go the opposite way. We'll begin with candidate Morgan. Do you feel the city government is as inclusive as it could be in terms of public participation in decision-making? If yes, explain that, and if not, what would you like to see changed?
Certainly, we can do better. I have based my time as the city commissioner on the principle of engagement. I think that the City Hall could do better. We have done better in recent months, having a lot of forums available to the public, such as a planning and zoning. We've had parks forums for people to come in and participate, trying to seek guidance where they want the city to go.
Thank you. Candidate Tyler Johnson. Do we need to have an economic development director and also a Main Street Coordinator?
Yes, I believe we need to have both of those positions. Part of the Main Street Coordinator position entails reentering the Kentucky Main Street Program, which I have some experience with. There's some networking there and resources, and you become a certified downtown. It's part of a revitalization and redevelopment plan, and we'd also need an economic development director for the sole reason of growing the businesses we have and attracting new ones.
Candidate David Johnson, do you feel we have enough interaction with EKU as city government? If not, how would you like to see that changed?
Well, recently, the Richmond Chamber of Commerce had Michael Benson for business at noon, and what he talked about was the city of Richmond and EKU coming together. There are certainly some opportunities there that we could, you know, come up with, but I do think that we are liking a little bit. A lot of our students who go to college here, they really, you know, are looking for something to do here in Richmond, and we are losing business to Lexington, not just saying, you know, something in particular, but they're looking for something to do. So I think that together, if we, you know, want to reach out, or we did reach out to EKU, you know, we can come up with a good plan.
Candidate Grant, what is your opinion of downtown redevelopment and building rehabilitation versus more new development down there?
I think it's very important to preserve the history and everything that we do have downtown, and also kind of find a really good balance in between new development and then restoring some of those old buildings. I know there's been talks of the first street program and some beautification down there, and I think that's really what we need, regardless of if it's new development or preserving some old historic buildings. I mean, I think that we just need beautification down there.
Candidate Childers, knowing that Richmond is a city manager form of government, that that is the executive authority, how do you plan to support the day-to-day operational decisions by the city manager?
All new commissioners that will be elected need to work hand-in-hand with the new city manager, and open lines of communication are key as far as running this city. I think that is a huge thing that we have to communicate with each other and the city manager to move the city forward.
I think when we did this forum in the spring, everybody running said, "Go ahead and hire a city manager," which has been done, so there we go. All right, let's go to candidate Bryant. Do you think the city's comprehensive plan adequately addresses long-term planning issues in the city? Why or why not?
I don't think so. I think the comprehensive plan needs to be revised and taken a look at again. One of the things that I think we could look at and add to that comprehensive plan is become a wired city. I think if, I know we've got the backbone now from the state with fiber coming into Richmond. I think if we become a wired city, that one of the things we can attract a lot of business is a lot of industries. And I'll look at Framebridge. Framebridge is a local company here, employs about 200 folks. They're completely internet-based, and I think that's going to be the future. I think we need to put that into our plans and our comprehensive plan and become a wired city.
Thank you. Candidate Brewer. In trying to make the city more pedestrian-friendly, do you have plans or would you propose plans to install new sidewalks and/or repair existing sidewalks? Is that a major issue in your view?
Well, we started out years ago on the Commission repairing sidewalks and creating wheelchair ramps and things that make it easier for people to make access to downtown, and part of that, working to get those sidewalks done, is because we didn't have that. So, I mean, I don't know if there's an issue setting out there right now that where sidewalks are not accessible for everyone, but if there are, well, yes, we'll, you know, we should address that, so.
Thank you. Now, this will be a serious, the questions will go the other way, and this one, you know, this is a big enough question and a big enough challenge for every community. Let's just have everybody answer this question. Drug abuse, what are your plans to deal with the drug abuse that faces the community?
In 2009, I think we had a forum similar to this one where I told them, and I think Reverend Blatt touched on it too, that safety was an issue, and I told you back then that drugs were going to be a major issue for every community. I'd already seen it as a paramedic, it had changed. When I first started out, you'd see one or two, maybe now it's just every day. But we can't address it by just okaying it. We've got to fight it. We've got to fight it in our homes, we've got to fight it in our schools, we've got to fight it with our police department, we've got to fight it with us. Us, not just turning our way and saying, you know, it's going to be somebody else's problem. It's all of our problems anymore. I can tell you, an age group has changed from, I'm sorry. Well, I was going to say, an age group has changed tremendously. It was young, now it's everybody.
Candidate Bryant, how does Richmond deal with the drug issue?
That is a very good question, and that strikes home with me personally. Two years ago, I lost my youngest daughter to drugs, and I know, you know, Mike said it's a fight for everybody, and I know I fought with my daughter. You know, I did tough love, soft love, rehab, jail, and those folks need to want to change. I don't know what the answer is. You know, one of the things that I think maybe that we should look at is do what the government did to the cigarette companies years ago. I think part of our problem with the drugs that we have now started in the pharmaceutical company, and, you know, maybe you need to sue the pharmaceutical company and let them set up those rehab programs, because they're very expensive. They don't always work. Like I say, my daughters went into rehab two or three times, and it never took. So I really don't know what the answer is. I know it's a problem. I don't think it's going to get any better, but that may be one of the solutions, is I know there's some counties, some cities are suing the pharmaceutical companies. Maybe that's something that Richmond should look at.
Candidate Childers, dealing with the drug issue in Richmond.
Well, unfortunately, I don't know if there is a surefire answer to that question, but I really do believe that this all starts at home. Parenting and school programs. I have some officer friends that go into schools now, talk to the kids in schools. After-school programs. Parks, we've got to create programs to keep the children and youth occupied so that they don't have the free time to go out and try to find recreational drugs. Also, I think that, you know, it comes down to the police force, and that's going to be city, county, state, and all the way up to work through this to control the drugs. I don't know if there is an answer to get rid of the drugs here, but do the best we can to try to control the situation.
Candidate Grant, dealing with the drug issue in the community.
From a city's aspect, I think that, well, something that the city can do is play a role in facilitating, getting the right people in the right rooms to facilitate some constructive conversations about what the correct route to be would be, and, you know, how we're going to fund that, and whether it be a rehabilitation center or after-school programs or anything like that. I don't think it's something that we're going to be able to just arrest our way out of, and we can see it's having a huge toll on our county jail right now at the moment due to overcrowding, and I think as for the city, I think that they need to facilitate and try to get the people in the right rooms to have the right conversations to try and figure out a solution.
Thank you. Candidate David Johnson.
Well, from a personal perspective, I remember growing up, going to the old Kingston School about, I don't know if y'all know who I'm talking about, but Billy would come around and, you know, say no to drugs and the DARE program and all that stuff that came about in the late 80s and early 90s, and so it does start at home, it does start at the elementary's level, and, you know, even now I'm 36 years old, you know, I still remember that going through my mind when I, you know, at Kingston in those days. I think Richmond has a couple of good opportunities. We do have a Liberty Place here, it's just a couple streets down from where I live, that deals with women who have went through the drug abuse program, so they're doing some great things there. Jacob did touch on the rehabilitation, you know, facility. Is there something that EKU could possibly help us with, or is there a program out there now that say, "Hey, we didn't know you offered this, but, you know, let's let the people know about what is going on at EKU to get the rehabilitation and get back to the general public." And as of right now, my final thought I will say before I stop, there's nothing for the men in this community. There's no facility for them to go to, and they really need something to uplift them as well.
Thank you. Candidate Tyler Johnson.
I think it starts with working with Madison County government, Berea, EKU, to share resources. That includes, research shows that long-term rehab works the best for people who enter. We have to look at programs like supportive transitional housing and couple that with a program that promotes gainful employment once they exit rehab, because the biggest issue that we see is, once they get out of that environment and they're rehabbed, we have to keep them out of that environment, and their percentage chance to be successful goes up from there.
Thank you. Candidate Jason Morgan.
It's an all-hands-on-deck solution to a problem. We need a preventative phase with better education and better police training that prevents the drugs from coming into our communities. We need a rehab phase where we facilitate individuals that are addicted through rehab that is based on evidence, and we need a sustaining phase. Those who have kicked the habit, we're able to support them, we're able to find them a job, we're able to find long-term housing. In all these phases, we need to rely on the evidence. It's interesting, Mr. Brewer talked about having a forum about drugs, but the forum didn't bring in a medical doctor to talk about solutions. And recent studies have shown that suboxone clinics provide a resource to help fight the addiction. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Now, next question, candidate Morgan, and this, again, this question has shown up in every pile here for the mayors, the commissioners, and in various forums, it keeps coming up as an apparent issue. Do you believe the city has a responsibility to make sure that rental property is safe and properly maintained? If so, what specifics would you like to see put in place, as far as regulations, I guess?
Is this related to the criminal activity occurring from the previous forum? I've got a solution for that. There is a federal statute that says that if your property, if your property is central to a crime, the government can take seats to property. I think that, correct, I think we're going to adopt that federal statute into ordinance here soon. One of my proudest moments was enacting, having the Commission enact a code enforcement board Mr. Bryant serves on, and anytime there's a code violation, anytime there is a nuisance, you call the city out, the city inspects it, and gives an individual, the landowner, time to remedy the problem, and if they don't, it goes before the codes enforcement board for remedy. Those are steps that the city has taken and have been very proactive on that has helped clean up our city. It is, it's helped us demolish a lot of vacant homes where crime has occurred.
Candidate Tyler Johnson, do you have a priority as far as a new city ordinance or city ordinances that you want to get passed if you're elected to the city commission?
I don't know if it's necessarily an ordinance. I'm assuming an ordinance would have to be passed, but I own a business downtown, I live downtown. We have to enter the Kentucky Main Street Program again. We were in it 10 years ago and understandably cut it for budget reasons, but it goes a long way in downtown revitalization and redevelopment, and it's going to allow us to attract new business and keep long-term sustainable business downtown.
Candidate David Johnson, technology and social media play a major role in today's society. Do you believe Richmond city government is doing an adequate job of informing citizens about issues and projects and the day-to-day activities of city government?
Well, I think certainly we can do just a little bit better. I know the city has recently revamped their website, and it's very user-friendly. For instance, if you have, let's say, for instance, a code enforcement or a complaint, if you have a pothole or something like that, you can go online and you can fill that out, and I'm actually really good about getting, you know, getting that taken care of. I've actually helped several of my friends that lives up on Village Drive who's had the potholes up there, and we're saying, "What do we do? How do we go about things?" And, you know, I'm like, you know, you can go online, you can fill that out, and people are actually responding to that, so I think we're taking the steps in the right direction where we've, you know, where we're going. So, and I'm actually, you know, honored to help those people as well, because sometimes they don't know. And as for the social media, you know, I like posting questions on Facebook, you know, about citizen involvement, what would you like to see in government? And they'll tell you, and I love their responses.
Thank you. Candidate Grant, numerous businesses have opened and struggled downtown, and many have ultimately closed their doors within a couple of years or so. What can the city do to help small businesses succeed in town?
Yeah, I think the main thing that we could do would be to offer some kind of incentive to kind of help them get off their feet, maybe in the first year, first couple years of being in business. I know that in some cities, they will do, they'll help out in rent for the first year, just anything to kind of incentivize them and just kind of help them, help them get off their feet. And as far as when they first come into Richmond, I think that we could be a little more welcoming, and whether it's codes or whatever, I think that we just need to kind of welcome them more with open arms and make it a little bit easier for them to get started here in Richmond.
Thank you. Candidate Childers, can, how would you work with, have the city and county better work together so that the two can coexist and co-promote the area?
I kind of agree with the candidates for mayor on that. I think just to sit down and talk with each other and see about what each problems that the county and the city have, and how they could work together to maybe come to an agreement on how, some things that the city can do could probably affect the county and vice versa. So we've got to sit down together and be able to work with them, I think, and just be clear and open and communicate with each other so we can help each other out. That's all we're here for, anyway.
Thank you. Candidate Bryant, one of the keys to attracting business to the area is to provide an adequate workforce. Should the city be involved in ensuring that our workforce is adequately trained? If so, how can the city government support that effort?
I definitely think the city should be involved with the training of workforce. I think we can partner up with, you know, I heard a question earlier about partnering with EKU. I think it's one of the ways to do that. One of the things that the city could, should look at is partner up with EKU with students and develop some incubator projects here in town to get them started. I know we've had several of them that went from EKU students to successful businesses. You know, support some of the local vocational schools to provide educational opportunities, internships is another way you can support some of that, develop that workforce. And I think the workforce is out there, just getting them educated and finding them.
Thank you. Candidate Brewer, name three that you'd be returning to the Commission if you went back. Name three things that you would want to accomplish as a city commissioner if you were to be elected.
One, two, three, well, one, I'd like to see the safety issue fixed here in our community. I remember being a child and riding my bicycle downtown when I was eight years old and never had a problem, never worried about it. had a problem, never worried about a thing. Second, I'd like to bring businesses back to our town and do an industrial park, doing our local businesses and supporting them. And three, just sit down and talk with people. In that old-fashioned thing, we talk about technology, oh, every one of us sat up here and said, if we're going to sit down and talk with the county or talk with Berea, we had to sit down and go face-to-face and just talk about issues. We don't do it anymore. We pick up a cell phone, we pick up a computer, and that's how we communicate. We got to figure out a better way of communicating with our local people and our local governments. So.
Thank you. Let's try to get each candidate on the record on this issue, which came up earlier. And there is a proposal to allow the cities, larger cities such as Richmond, Lexington, Louisville, the larger towns, Hopkinsville, Frankfurt, to have a restaurant tax.
Am I first?
And let's do, and let's do this two ways. I mean, you know, you can be for the state allowing it without being for it. And so if you want to go so far as to answer the question of how you would vote on locally, that's fine. If not, do you support the city having the ability to have a restaurant tax that it could designate funds for?
First of all, we're not eligible for a restaurant tax, and we all know that.
But that's why it's been.
But if we're going to tax, I want something, I want to see a reason why we're going to set that tax up for our businesses. We're going to tax our restaurants or tax somebody new coming in that's opening up a restaurant. I, you know, it's got to be a reason for when you throw that big word out that's not spelled along, but it has a big weight to it, and that's taxing somebody. So I want to have a reason why we're going to do that. And if it's just to create more money in our budget or to help tourism or something, show that to me, and we'll deal with it.
Thank you. Candidate Bryant, the question on the restaurant tax.
I'd be for the restaurant tax. I think that studies have shown that when they pass this restaurant tax elsewhere, there's been no depreciation in the businesses and the restaurants. It's not really made an impact in that. I think you can take that money and use it as an advertising campaign for tourism to bring industry to Richmond. You know, you turn on the TV, you see, you know, come to the Great Smoky Mountains, come to Gatlinburg, come to Myrtle Beach. I think you could use that as a way to promote Richmond and promote businesses to Richmond, promote tourism to Richmond. We've got a rich history that we should have tourism coming here, and that's going to impact and that's going to benefit the entire community economically.
Candidate Childers, your feelings about a restaurant tax?
I have no problem if the state wants to allow that to be an option for individual cities. As far as in Richmond, not sure where that money goes, I think, to tourism. And if we could find a way to use maybe that money, as Mr. Bryant said there, for different things or different programs, or even take that money to use that for some sort of a drug program or that after-school program for kids. If we could do something with the money to help the city with something like a drug epidemic, I would be for a restaurant tax. The problem I have with it is it passes that along to the consumer. You know, the restaurant's not paying more tax. They're just adding it on the menu, and you're paying more for your cheeseburger or whatever that might be. So it's a tough call. Like I said, if we could use it for good, I would, I would use it.
Thank you. Candidate Grant, your feeling about a restaurant tax?
I agree with Chris as far as the state allowing the city to determine whether they should implement one. I don't have a problem with that. As far as for me to speak on, whether I would support it or not, I would have to do some deeper research into maybe what Mr. Bryant was saying about if it does have any effect on new restaurants coming here and if that tax does get passed on the consumer, the kind of effect that it does have on that. So I would have to dive a little bit deeper before I could speak on it.
Some of you all may not know, I actually spent 10 years in the fast food industry. It is rough. That's where most of my hair went, not, you know, stress and things of that nature. But, you know, the question is, you know, we need to maintain fiscal responsibility before we pass any new taxes on. You know, one of the things that I think that we need to do is we need to work on our, on a new 10-year comprehensive plan for the city. With a new mayor and a new city board of commissioners, we need a new direction. And, you know, if we're going to pass a new tax, you know, if it's a great plan, if it's going to benefit the city of Richmond, let's do it. But it needs to be a good plan. We need to maintain fiscal responsibility. It's been four years since we have done a parks plan, and that's, you know, the last plan that Parks and Rec had was four years ago. So that's why I stay on that issue.
Thank you. Candidate Tyler Johnson, restaurant tax.
I am for a restaurant tax. However, I think we need to show we can properly invest the money we've already raised as a city before we add an additional tax onto our business owners and consumers. I would be for open public forums for business owners, restaurant owners to come, discuss that openly, get their feelings, and then go from there.
Thank you. Candidate Morgan.
I'm for consistency and fairness, and if one community can, can provide a restaurant tax, I think that that option should be available to all cities. With that being said, a restaurant tax to the city of Richmond would equate to about $4 million in increased revenues. That's how Elizabeth Town built their sports complex. That's the positive. The negative is it affects the, those individuals that probably could least afford to pay an additional tax. Your restaurants will be given, last time it was proposed in the General Assembly, the restaurants were given a little bit of a loophole where they didn't have to pay net profits. But what, what effect does it have to do? What effect does it create on their business? If, if I having to pay 3% on my meal, I'm probably going to go to the, to the restaurant a little less. So it's a question that probably deserves a community input before that decision is made by the full commission.
Thank you. And again, as was pointed out earlier, at this point, it's not an option for.
It's, it's constitution prevents it, yeah.
But legislature could change that. All right. Candidate Morgan. Richmond has experienced a rapid increase in homeless and at-risk populations. What ideas do you have to propose to address that issue?
The homeless issue needs to be addressed not through temporary housing. It needs to be long-term housing. I invited the homeless czar, as I call her, from Lexington to come speak to the commission. And she said, you need to, when addressing the homeless issues, erase the stigma that goes with the homeless population. More often than not, it's, it's not criminals. More often than not, it's not those on drugs. It's, it's those who lack an opportunity. So the first way to address it is to invest in homeless shelters that provide long-term housing. Work with community partners, those who have vacant buildings to house your homeless population. And then provide an economic opportunity so that those that are homeless and are able to work can find a job. It goes back to a question earlier. What role does Richmond have to play in career development? And this is a role.
Candidate Tyler Johnson. What is the city's role in, in addressing affordable housing? So it kind of picks up on a similar theme there.
They have a minimal role, but one that work with consultants, work with developers to make sure that we do have affordable housing. I don't think that the city should be at the forefront, but it's a shared effort. It's a partnership with others in the community to make sure that we do have affordable housing and long-term housing as well.
Thank you. Candidate David Johnson. Richmond seems to have a large number of streets with patched sections, uneven surfaces. Some have not been surfaced for years. Why is that such a problem in your view, and can it be resolved?
Well, I think part of the problem is, is like, you know, as I mentioned earlier, was about the 10-year comprehensive plan. I think we probably may have strayed from that just a little bit, but we are making improvements every single day. As I mentioned earlier, a friend of mine had, you know, mentioned about a pothole where she lived and asked me what to do, and so I told her. And so, you know, our roads department is doing a really good job at getting to the potholes. We just need to know where they're at. There is some road construction going on, but if you see something out of the, out of the ordinary, just call City Hall and let them know or call the roads department. So, you know, I think once we get a new mayor, you know, on board and as well as some new commissioners, we can get back to a new 10-year plan and make sure that we follow through with that plan. And as for roads and subdivisions, there's some subdivisions that doesn't even have curbs, and it's allowing water to go into their basements, and that's a huge problem. And that's especially on Bluegrass Drive back where I live, and that's what I've heard from people in the community.
Candidate Grant. Once marketed as a place to work, grow, and play, Richmond seems to now lag behind other central Kentucky cities with an attractive and vibrant parks system, this questioner says. What efforts would you suggest to update the parks and create potentially more visitors to the community?
I think that we're in desperate need of, of an indoor sports complex. I think that, that Lake Reba, besides some, some maintenance issues, I mean, that's about, they pretty much ran out of space, so I think we need to expand somewhere else. But I mean, I think that, I think it's a huge issue because it is what these industries look at whenever they're going to decide if they're going to come here and do business, and that's the quality of life of their workers, and a lot of it has to do with our parks and, Parks and Rec system. So I do think that, that we need an indoor sports facility, and I think that would go a long ways.
Thank you. Candidate Childers. Name three things that you personally would want to accomplish as a city commissioner.
Well, the number one thing that I've always spoken of is growth. I'd like to drive down Duncan and the industrial park and say, I helped bring this here, bring 400, 500, 1,000 jobs here. That would be number one. The other things that I would like to do would be some cleanup. Get off the interstate, and I see some spots that, kind of disturbing, really. And we have a nice university here. You went there, and I went there. And if I'm dropping my child off in Richmond for the first time, and I get off the interstate and see it's grown up, and there's beer signs and trash blowing around, I'm not interested in sending my kid here. So we need to do a little cleanup on that. That'd be the second thing. And the third thing is something that bothered me today. I noticed that Richmond is 32% poverty level. We need to, we need to work on creating more jobs.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant, candidate Bryant, what is your solution to downtown parking?
Downtown parking, that's the hot-button issue. I live about two blocks from downtown, so I'm downtown every day, and I go downtown for business several times a week. I don't really think it's an issue because I see plenty of parking places. A lot of times I have to go to the courthouse on business. I don't have to drop around the block more than once or less than half a block before I can find a parking place. I think one of the issue is, is you need to find folks to come downtown. I'll use both the parades that we have. It doesn't seem to be a parking issue when we have our Christmas parade, when we have the Madison Central Homecoming Parade. As far as building a parking garage, I don't think I'd be for that. You're talking about $17,000 per parking space. I do think the parking is there for folks to do, to park. You know, you have some businesses downtown that never seem to have a problem with parking. And then I think you also have some businesses downtown where some of the business owners or some of the delivery folks park in front of their stores.
Richmond's senior citizen population is estimated about 46%, and the question points out Berea, Versailles, and Stanford all have up-to-date and vibrant senior citizen centers. What can Richmond do to have an adequate facility that will provide space and activities for that population?
Well, first of all, we need to get involved back with our senior citizens. We need to show them that we care. We need to, the center that we have now, it's been there long before I was a commissioner, I think it, or it might have been on my first year back on the commission before that we had the old senior citizen structure that's still there. So I think we need to put some money into it. We need to invest our, how old do you have to be to be a senior citizen? Because I'm 65. So, but anyway, that's what we need to do. We need to be back invested in, in our seniors. So we put some money in it.
All right. Candidate Brewer. The current administration, this questioner says, has talked repeatedly about fixing sidewalks, but much of the city remains with no sidewalks at all. And they point out East Main and Barnes Mill Road as examples. What do you propose to start a movement on the sidewalk issue?
I'm trying to get that question. You know, we've, we've had an issue with sidewalks here in Richmond for a long, long time, and those places have had the opportunity to be fixed, but they haven't. Now with the new city manager and a new commission coming on and a new mayor, perhaps we'll address that to where those sidewalks can be built. It just takes money. And they said, we have a lot of money, so let's spend it and fix those sidewalks.
Well, if it's a hot-button issue, let's get everybody on it. Candidate Bryant, the sidewalk issue. We have areas of town that have no sidewalk at all. People have to walk through yards.
I do think that we do have a sidewalk problem. I think there are some solutions for that. I know, I believe there's an ordinance that if the sidewalk in front of my house is deteriorating, you know, I'm half responsible for that. The city's half responsible for paying for that. Some areas like East Main Street, Barnes Mill, I think there should be a plan to put sidewalks there. You know, we need to provide access to pedestrians. We have a lot of folks that walk. Now, yeah, they've got, got a lot of money, as Mike said, you know, maybe they need to spend some of it on the sidewalk infrastructure. I think infrastructure and upgrading is an issue, not only locally, but nationwide. But I would like to see the sidewalks in Richmond upgraded.
Thank you. Candidate Childers, sidewalks. Is it a major issue in your view?
Well, I live on Barnes Mill, so I can vouch for the no sidewalk issue. I took my daughter out for a walk there a couple of years ago and decided that I didn't want to walk on Barnes Mill anymore without a sidewalk. So I think we have to look at where the safety concerns are. I think we've got damaged sidewalks, number one. That would be the first thing we need to do is take care of the damaged sidewalks. Those can be a safety issue, and we don't need any lawsuits. And the second thing is, like, just for instance, for on Barnes Mill, without the sidewalk. Maybe that's something we need to look at in phases, and we do, you know, over the next five years, you do partial sidewalks and start to work that in. And that way, it's not all coming out of the budget all at one time. But something to look forward in, in the future.
Candidate Grant. We talked about you do real estate. Is that, is our sidewalk a major issue?
Yes, we, we hear about it all the time in different subdivisions and everything. And one of the main things is not, not only figuring out what places need them and, but it's the maintenance of them. I think that there's some confusion with, with some citizens about who's responsible for what, and I think that should also be, be addressed.
Thank you. Candidate David Johnson.
Well, like Chris, I know what he goes through about, you know, not having a sidewalk out there. Actually, I live on East Urban Street, so I am one of the people who does share a yard with people walking through and everything else. I get all the garbage and, you know, the trash and stuff that blows around. But, you know, we do really need to concentrate on sidewalks. There's a couple of questions that would, you know, people would ask is, would be, well, where do we start? Who pays for it? So I think, you know, once the new board of commissioners come on, you know, and we agree to do sidewalks, we need to sit down with members of the community, get their input, where, you know, where is it needed most? You know, East Oldham Street, or whether it be East Main Street or down Barnes Mill Road, you know, and we need to sit down and have a conversation with the people and have their input and say, hey, what, what do you know, or what can you tell us that we don't see? You know, that way we can make sure that we have a proper and adequate sidewalk system.
Thank you. Candidate Tyler Johnson.
The lack of sidewalks and deferred maintenance means this is going to be a huge investment. So I do agree with the five-year plan to do this in phases. It's going to allow our city to be safer. It's going to let those who are disabled to be able to travel easier, and it'll incentivize them to be able to travel because they know they will be safer. them to be able to travel because they know they will be safer. Also, I think as we, as we invest in the sidewalks, we have to be more transparent with the public and let them know updated progress so that they know it is something that is being worked on and it's not deferred anymore.
Thank you. Candidate Morgan, sidewalk.
A couple of years ago, I believe the budget was delayed in passing because the commission insisted that funding for new sidewalks or improvement of sidewalks was, was in the budget. That was, that was last year and then this year we've, we've added additional funding for sidewalks repaired. Second to that, we have entered into an agreement with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet with the Main Street Rehab where from, from the corner of Lancaster and Main, out towards past Arlington, there will be new sidewalks, new roads, multi-youth path. This provides me an opportunity to talk about the Water Street project. It's, it's a five to six million dollar project. I'm certainly in favor of delaying that project to allow us to spend additional funding, millions possibly, to build new sidewalks in East Main and Barnes Mill. It would also allow us additional funding for senior citizens in a homeless shelter as well.
All right. This last question is, is interesting and you can probably answer it at your peril, but let's, but let's have each commission candidate answer this. Other than yourself, who do you think's the most qualified candidate?
I'm glad Jason's going for it.
You know, I'm known for my bluntness and I apologize, I might defer a little bit. Those types of questions tend to anger people and tend to don't win friends and influence individuals. I expect to be here in, in January. I have to work with, with whoever's elected and I'm not going to offend anyone at the moment. So I'm going to defer that question.
Thank you. Candidate Tyler Johnson, you have a favorite to serve with you if you're elected?
So let me say first, through the campaign season, I've gotten to know all of these guys really well. They're all great people, so this isn't a negative in any way, but I'm going to choose Jason Morgan. He's, he's shown results. He's gotten results for the city. He's done a great job and I mean, I think he should be reelected as well.
Candidate David Johnson.
I think that each and every one of my opponents are very special in each and every way, so I really like all of them. I think all of them would bring something uniquely to the table and would be for the betterment of the people of the city of Richmond.
Thank you. Candidate Grant.
Yeah, I would agree kind of along the same lines as, same lines as Tyler, going through this process of got to know these gentlemen up here a little bit more and I don't think that they would be sitting up here if they didn't have the qualifications to be a, a good commissioner. So I hope to, I hope to be, be elected in November and whoever I'm working with, I look forward to that.
Candidate Childers, can you work with anybody up there?
Is there a repeat button? What everybody else said? No, we really do. We, we, we see each other all the time. We all are at the same events and I've known a lot of these guys for years anyway. But to be honest about it, I've been voting for Jason in the past, so I'd be lying if I said that it, that wouldn't be who I would vote for.
Candidate Bryant, other than yourself, who do you think's the most qualified?
Can we cut out a little while so I can hear some more? And I'm like everybody else, I am partial to Commissioner Morgan, I'll admit that. I do appreciate, it's not easy running for office. It takes a lot of time, a lot of money, and I appreciate the efforts that all of these gentlemen have put forward and I feel I could work with any and all of them.
Thank you. Candidate Brewer.
Well, I voted for Jason in the past too. So I've also voted for Mike Brewer in the past. And most of these people over here, I've known all their lives and in a way kind of helped raise some of them. So I could work with anybody on this commission. I couldn't talk bad about any of them.
Thank you. Let's do this, about 30 seconds here at the end. If any issue came up that you heard that was directed to another candidate that you didn't get to answer that question or you have something else that you want to add as far as a closing for tonight, let's do that and we'll, why don't we start with candidate Grant this time? We'll go that way. See if I can keep it straight. This will be a 30-second just summation. Anything you'd like to add to this evening's discussion?
So now, so is this the closing ceremony?
It's your closing statement and.
Okay. Yeah.
If you do a little longer, let it, let it ride.
Okay. I think that, I think it's going to be very important after this, this election that the, the new city manager and the new commission and the new mayor really sit down and I think it's going to be vital that they have a clear vision of where they want the city to go with so much change that's coming to the city government. I think more than ever, it's important for, for unity and transparency and City Hall. And I hope I get that opportunity to, to give the citizens of, of Richmond that up, that.
Thank you. Candidate Childers.
Yeah. I really liked what both the candidates for mayor had mentioned about being very clear and open with, with the new commission and themselves and the city manager. It is a city manager-run government. I really like the idea of everybody working together. That's one of my main things with, with government. I feel like we're all at each other's throats for some reason, when we all need to be coming together to work for a common good and that's for the people of Richmond.
Thank you. Candidate David Johnson.
I think one of the things that I would really would like to see in Richmond would be a hotel nuisance ordinance. I've mentioned with some people about, you know, how we would go about this. It's a far problem at hotels. You've had the police been calling. I know Jason, you've worked on some, something of that nature and, you know, the lighting on the great house and the bypass intersection out there as well. So I do think there are a couple of opportunities, I think, that we could have here in Richmond. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that I've went to the, that's allowed me to come to their door. Thank you to retired city manager David Evans for his endorsement of my campaign and all the words of wisdom that he's given to me. So I'm really looking forward to November 6th.
Thank you. Candidate Michael Bryant.
Yeah, I wanted to touch on one of the things that Commissioner Morgan said, talking about neighborhoods. This is something very personal with me. I think a lot of our neighborhoods are sort of under siege. We have party houses, we have drug houses. We do have ordinances on the books. We can have new ordinances on the books to clean up these neighborhoods. You know, we keep talking about economic development, bringing industry and business here. If you've got rundown, ugly neighborhoods, they're not going to come here. I do like the suggestion Commissioner Morgan made and I would like to see a drug house ordinance passed. So you get, okay, you're selling drugs out of this house. We can prove that. It's a forfeiture and the city gets that. So neighborhoods are very important to me.
Thank you. Candidate Tyler Johnson.
The current pension process is, is going to be big. It already is big for the city. If there's a 12% increase for the next five years, as has been proposed by fiscal year 2024, we're projected to have a $6.7 million pension expense. The Kentucky League of Cities, one of their top priorities is to separate the county-city employment retirement system from the rest of the system. Currently, the non-hazardous and hazardous CERS systems are funded at 58% or above. They're the most funded retirement systems that we have currently. So I'm for separating those and, and for the, to make sure that we are, understand the pension as it comes up in the next five years.
Thank you. Candidate Mike Brewer.
Well, I'll use it as a closing statement too. Look, I've got 12 years' experience on the commission. I've been a paramedic. I bring stability and experience to you all. I work hard, always have, even when I was a commissioner for, we did an industrial park, we built Lake Reba, we did a lot of projects. So I want to continue in that capacity as a city commissioner, do just that. I want to work with tourism, parks, all of our boards.
Thank you. And candidate, Jason Borg.
In lieu of a closing statement, I want to make two points. First, I want to thank those for the kind words and compliments. I'm very touched and it means a lot to me. We briefly touched about working with Eastern and then on the side conversation, exit 87. Eastern brought it, brought to the city's attention the negative effects of exit 87. And I just want to provide a, a little bit of an update. Since last week, we defined that the landowner on exit 87, $3,800, I believe, for nuisance violations, trying to clean up our city and helping the university.
Thank you. Does, are there times when it's the state's issue, when the, when the weeds are growing up?
That is, I've emailed the state and I think Representative Smart has spoken with the governor about it. Emailed the state about the weeds and, and covering up the signs and asked if the signs were that important, can they cut the weeds down? And if they didn't have intentions of cutting the weeds down, can they at least remove the signs? The street, the state's maintenance of our roads, our contracted services, they appear to not think it's that important of an issue at the moment.
Thank you very much. Candidates, thank you very much for tonight's discussion. Good job with all the issues. Not everything was easy. Some of those questions are kind of, kind of fun, but we certainly enjoyed and feel more informed here leaving tonight. And on behalf of the Richmond Chamber of Commerce, thank you very much for being here tonight and have a safe trip home and go vote in November.